Everything set with the streaming?
Yeah, we're live, yes.
Okay. All right, everyone, ready and welcome to the City of Utica Common Council Pre-Caucus Caucus Meeting, January 6, 2021. Happy New Year to everyone, and let's get started. The first resolution is sponsored by Councilmember Miola. It's a Commissioner of Deeds, Nadine Berencini. Are you good with that one?
Yes, Ms. Majority Leader.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Majority Leader, I'm good.
Anyone who's got background noise, if you could please mute, that would be great if there's TVs in the background. Thank you.
Councilperson Friend, ordinance number two, the Public Safety Transparency Ordinance of 2021, would you like to discuss this?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss this a little bit. So this is the improved version of one that actually sits in committee, and I decided that it was better to start fresh rather than trying to amend it on the floor so that everybody could read the new version. So this is the new version of the one that sits in committee, and we had talked at a prior meeting about the need to really spell out all the things that could and couldn't be included. So I've done that. I did that by going over the actual law, which was provided to me by Deputy Chief Noonan. So this very clearly spells out what the kind of information that we would absolutely not include and the information that we would. So and then the other, the piece that still sits in committee, I would just at some point need to introduce it in order to resend it.
And at this point-
So I don't know if anybody has any questions?
At this point, you spoke with corporate counsel and the judge and Chief Williams.
Well, I've spoken to Chief Williams or I've emailed Chief Williams. He's seen it. I assume that everybody has seen it. It got sent out last week, so it's made its rounds, and I haven't heard back from anybody. I heard one thing from the judge, which is the concern about duplicative, duplicating state law, which this doesn't do because the state law, the repeal of 50A, simply allows us to release this information, whereas this ordinance is requiring us to put this information on the website. So it's a little different. It's a sort of, in a sense, an extension of 50A.
Chief Williams, would, are you on the-
I am.
Can you speak on this and your feelings on this?
Yes, from reviewing the document itself, a lot is repeating the state law as it is written. The only difference between the state law and this ordinance is that we currently already follow it. The only difference is it would require the fire department to also post their discipline records as well. I don't know if they have the capability. You may want to talk to the fire chief about their responsibility under this.
So what you're saying is that you currently do all of this?
We currently do this. We post our discipline records on our department website. The only difference is from reading this over is that it would require the fire department to do the same thing. So you may want to get the chief's opinion on that.
Is the chief on for that?
Okay.
Madam Majority Leader, Councilman Beatrice?
Yes.
May I ask, did I miss something or didn't we get a letter from Corporation Counsel stating basically the same thing the chief just said? Not our, not, not our, not Judge Guermont, but the city attorneys too?
We did, but I think it's important that the public also hears what happened in our emails, so that's why I'm kind of reiterating things.
No, I'm just asking because, I'm just asking because Councilperson Friend basically said she talked to the police and didn't hear anything from anybody else, and I'm pretty sure that I read an email from Corporation Counsel stating, you know, their feelings on this.
Councilman Beatrice is right. I misspoke, but I didn't, yeah, absolutely. You're absolutely right, Councilman. What we had talked about at a previous meeting was the desire for the council to put their own stamp on this by, by making an ordinance for what we're already doing. So what we're already doing is good, and I really commend the mayor for taking this action so quickly after the 50A was repealed. This is simply codifying what we're already doing in law. It's not making us do anything new that we're not already doing. It's simply the council putting its stamp on it.
Madam Majority Leader, can I make a comment?
Absolutely. Councilperson Moody.
Councilperson Friend, I do think though, now that I think about it, and forgive me, I should have thought about this earlier, but I do think though that there's an angle of part of this that's missing. I think the last time we had the conversation with the council, I think we actually talked about the types of things that we would want to be detailed, if it were sexual assault, things of that nature, and also to put in writing, kind of made pub, I don't know, made public stuff that we wanted to know about, not just the negative side, but also to post some of the what would be, would be voted on, would be like the types of things that we want to be public, and not just having a person just file for any disciplinary action like those mundane things where the officer is disciplined for not wearing the uniform problem.
Right. Now, that's, if you read through the legislation down towards the bottom, it does say, "We're not going to put in all that mundane stuff," right? All-incontent shall be redacted from any of these records prior to being in public, and it's technical infractions, so it's all that kind of mundane stuff. It doesn't have to do, somebody, somebody needs to be muted. There's a radio going or something? That's better, thank you. So we, we're not, we're not including all the stuff that isn't of public concern, and that's what you have down at the bottom, is all the stuff that would be redacted, all the stuff that we wouldn't include. So those that don't involve interactions with members of the public. If it's not about, if it's showing up late, or if it's not keeping your uniform according to regulations or things like that, anything that's not of public concern, anything that's not connected to a person's investigative enforcement, training, supervision, et cetera. So that's exactly what we talked about it the last time we talked about this in meeting, and that was how I rewrote it or expanded upon it in order to take those things into consideration.
Okay, so we should probably hold off until we hear from the fire chief-
Okay.
-and figure out what's going on.
Would you like to call Chief Ingersoll and pull him in? I could text him to see if he can join, and then later on, if he's in, you guys can continue.
Sure.
Okay.
So we will move on to resolution-
Hold on, one, one, one question from Councilman DeBrango.
All right.
Is this, 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 this law regarding the civil rights law, it's still being challenged in New York State, am I right, Corporation Counsel?
So the law was repealed. I think there might be some federal, there might, there might be a case where they're, where they're challenging, they're challenging it on different grounds, but I, I don't think that they're particularly meritorious or going to succeed. I don't think, I don't, and, and we are abiding with the repeal, and we're already releasing these records, so they're kind of irrelevant to the, to the inquiry at this point.
Okay, all right, that's all I needed to know, thanks.
Thank you.
Madam Majority Leader, Councilman Beatrice, can I, can I ask Corporation Counsel a question on their opinion of this?
Of course.
So, so is it, is it your opinion also that this is just repetition, that there's really not a need for this?
So, hi, Councilman Beatrice, this is Kate Hartnett.
Hi, Kate, how are you?
Good. So we don't really, we, my office, we try to advise on, on, you know, when weighing the benefits or cons of a particular policy. So I don't think I could answer the question you've asked exactly without kind of stepping on other people's toes, but I will say that at first glance, the disordinance, there isn't anything illegal about it, although like Chief Williams said, you know, they're already doing all of this, and as other, the other concerns people have raised is that it is an enormous undertaking to prepare all of these records for publishing on the website as the police department can attest to, and it is, even if this law were passed, it would probably be a very, very heavy lift in light of their, their, their very efficient staffing levels that the fire department would be able to comply with this ordinance in, you know, in, in a fast sort of way. It's a lot of work to get this stuff ready to put on the website.
So, so can I ask another question?
Can I?
So as far as regarding the fire department, I'm not really sure why we're bringing, I know the fire department is mentioned in this law, but the fire department, this is more, isn't this law basically more of, you know, handling arrests and other things like this? So I'm not really, I'm not really sure why we would even put the firemen's records on file unless they did something wrong, and that record could be fi, could be foiled. So I'm not really sure, I'm kind of confused by that.
Man, I want to go for a moment.
I still had the floor, Councilperson.
I'd like the floor.
Can, can I, can I just say one thing quick? Whoever has their TVs on, could you please turn them off while you have your mics on? That way there we can hear everything clearly that's being said? Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Judge?
I'd like to say that the 50A applied to the fire department and the police department. That's why the fire department is not acting separate. 50A, they applied to both, police and fire. So anything you do with the police, you do with fire. That's number one. Number two, there is a, there is a situation here where the state has promulgated some rules, and it was my understanding, talking with the Corporation Counsel's office, that the City of Utica was complying with the state law. Now, the problem is when local government passes ordinances, that becomes law, and sometimes it doesn't keep pace with what the legislature does in another year to amend and do other changes than you'd have to do changes too. And my point being originally that local governments should not be in there interpreting or making law that's already covered by the state government. It's not a good idea. You can't pass a local law that reflects on a state statute. That's in the municipal rule law. So I, I just think you're, you're piling onto the state. Plus, there's a, there is an interesting part about this is that I, I, I'm a little still, a little bit confused about, you know, the need to know. The 50A came about and became criticized because you couldn't get information about these people, and mostly it appeared in lawsuits. Defense Counsel fought this very hard and wanted that repeal, and that was done, but just to, if you read the, the requirement here about transcripts and all of that, you know, billions could go on for quite a while, you're talking about a very tedious bit of work, and I think as long as you're complying with a state statute, you don't really need a local statute. And I know this is more extensive, but my question is, why did the local government get involved if the City of Utica's Corporation Counsels, as they've said to me, are complying with, complying with the state law? That's, that's the only thing I'll say on this, and I'm, I'm not going to speak for them, Ms. Hartnett speaks for them, but I, that's my conversations with Zach Zorn, or Goporn, and Charlie Brown, well, just a couple of days ago. So that's my only comment on that. You're the common council, do whatever you wish, and that's, that's not the, your attorney's opinion. That's, that's all.
Thank you, Judge.
May I confirm, Madam President?
Just before, before anyone else grabs the floor, Chief Ingersoll is dialing in, and we also do have Assistant Chief Noonan as well at this point.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilperson Friend, you have the floor.
So just a couple of things. One is that this doesn't simply duplicate the state law, because the state law makes no claim about whether you ought to put this kind of information on a city website. It makes no such claim. It simply repeals the shield law. It says that this information can be released, not that it has to be released. So it's not duplicative of the state law, but it is consistent with the state law. So I worked hard to make it consistent with the state law, and it includes the fire department, not only because of what the judge just explained to us, but because members of the council asked me to rewrite it so as to include the fire department. So, and the idea that it's a heavy lift to get this information online, that is, from the point of view of the police department, a heavy lift that has already been made, I believe, they got to work, this was several months ago or a few months ago that the mayor made this decision. The, the chief and deputy chief were the first people to put their records up online, and then they spent whatever period of time it took them to do this. We're now in maintenance mode, not in compliance with the law mode, as far as I can see.
Okay. Councilperson Friend?
I just want to, yeah, I, I just do want to repeat that I rewrote this law as people asked me to do so, and it was very clear a couple of months ago that there was some support, that there was a good deal of support in the room for this, for a law like this.
Okay. Chief Ingersoll, are you on the, on the line?
Yes, I think he's just got to unmute. I see him.
Yeah, I see him too. Hi, Chief. Good evening, happy new year. So we are talking about the Public Safety Transparency Ordinance, and if you could give us your thoughts and concerns about this. You need to unmute yourself. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
I don't know, I don't know why I muted again. I guess one of my biggest concerns is that I'm not quite sure where we're going to get the personnel, who's gonna, who's gonna add the information and get it accessible. We're a pretty transparent agency. If somebody requests something, we always do our best to get that out in a timely manner. We actually have a FOIL request today for several personnel records, and we're working on that at this time. You know, I just, I don't have anybody extra to work on getting the stuff entered into a system or anything like that right now.
Thank you. Let me just add my two cents.
Madam Majority Leader, can I-
I'm, I'm just going to say something really quick. My two thoughts on it are that if the chief is telling us that he does not have the personnel, I, I feel as though this is something that's important, but I feel like it's something that we might better revisit when it comes towards budget time to see if we do have the funds in order to put somebody in place to handle this position, because at this time our, our chief, our chief is telling us that he does not have the personnel for this. Councilperson Friend, you have the floor.
Thank you. I am more than happy to, to, at this point, we can easily take the, the fire department out of this. As I said, I added that back in at the request of my colleagues a few months ago at a, a committee meeting of the whole. I thought that was a fine idea, but if, if that's not practical at this point, let's just take that out, and we can do that pretty quickly and easily.
Okay, I got the, can I have the floor, Madam Chair?
Councilperson Williamson, you have the floor.
You know, we're beating this up for no reason. We, can we just, can you go around the table? We've got support to bring this up. If we don't, then just leave it alone, it's done. We're going to beat it up.
At your request, we'll start with me. First, Ward, I will not be supporting this. Second, Ward? Beatrice or Burmaster?
No, I won't be supporting this either.
Friend?
Well, I would, obviously. I wouldn't have to do so.
I understand, I'm just giving you the floor. Councilperson Miola?
No, I-
Ms. Majority Leader, if it's redundant legislation that reflects a state, it's a moot point. I won't be supporting it.
Moody?
I would love to see it stay in committee until we can get it with the fire department. I don't want them taken out of, so no, at this moment.
Beatrice?
No, I will not support it.
Williamson?
No.
LaMedico?
Not at this time.
Since we're following all the state guidelines and we're doing, I think we're well beyond of the other city, we are pretty transparent, and the Utica Fire Department Chief said that when someone requests or for a request record from somebody, you know, it's, they'll, they'll prepare and they'll give it. And I think the same goes for the police department if some of the members aren't on the website right now. So I feel if we're following state guidelines and we're following the law, it is redundant. I think Chief Williams said it, said it best, so I won't be supporting it, and I believe I'm going to be taking the other one out of committee if I get enough support. Thanks.
Okay. At this point, we'll be moving to Resolution Number Three. Councilmember Friend, this is a resolution to restore public comment during the COVID-19 pandemic. Open for discussion.
I have one, are the clerks, are the clerks on?
Yeah, I'm on.
For you, I'm, it's really going to work. I know that you actually finished your business date at 3:30, so I was wondering whether five was really the thing-
You're breaking up pretty good.
-whether earlier in the day worked better.
I can't hear you.
I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Councilmember Friend.
Does 5:00 PM deadline work well for you, or would earlier in the day work better?
Well, normally for any public comment, what would work better for me, since I get an abundance of emails at the city clerk email address, and I want to be able to print that out, and I want to be able to forward it to all the council members, so being that preparing for a meeting, I think, I, I would like it to be maybe the day before, by 4:30, the day before the meeting, that all comments can come in. This way I can make sure that I have them all printed and ready to be distributed to all the members of the council.
I also, when, when the time comes, Majority Leader.
Okay. Councilperson Friend, you were saying something?
No, I was just going to drill down on that, but that's fine. I'm, I'm happy to let somebody else ask questions.
Council President, you have a-
Yes, I just wanted to state, this has come up prior when, when the opening of the meetings also was discussed and public comment came up. If we were to do this, one, you know, I do want to state that we, we have- we have been able to do this since the April timeframe. The nature of which this would happen is that if people would like to participate in public comment live, they would have to request that and through the clerk and provide their name and phone number so that they could be dialed into the meeting, which would work very well, because then their name would be displaying. It wouldn't just be a phone number, et cetera. But in order to do that, we would have to have enough time for the clerk to order and present me with the list so that I could add those people to the meeting prior to the 7:00 p.m. time start. So I don't know what the clerk would request for that. But it's not just the compilation of things that would be read into the record. But for me to actually be able to dial people in at the 7:00 o'clock meeting, we would need that list compiled, complete with their phone number and full name so I can add it to the WebEx. So I don't know if that's noon, if 5:00 is good. You know, if we have committee meetings at 5:00 o'clock, we would need that prepared earlier so that we aren't scrambling to do it while we're actually running meetings in the time. So I don't know, you know, 3:00 o'clock might be a good deadline on the day of a meeting. That way, if people do decide that they see something they want to comment on, they still could. I would like it to be on the day of the meeting. I would not want the deadline to be the day before.
Can you explain why?
Why I would want it on the day of? I would want the deadline to be the day of because, for example, you know, the observer dispatch or paper of record does print our agenda on the morning of a meeting. And that's sometimes when people read our agenda and say, hey, I might want to speak on something that's happening at your meeting. So I do think that the deadline, the day of, would be appropriate. But I think we would just need the time a little earlier for the deadline for people to sign up so that the clerk would have time to compile the list.
I got a question, Madam Chair.
Counselperson Williamson, you have the floor.
So this resolution to restore public comment during COVID-19. President Galimi just said that this is, we've been doing this since April. We're authorized to do it already. So why are we doing this then? Why are we doing a resolution without the capability?
You could do this without a resolution. I think the counsel person just added it on her own accord. But this has been, we have been capable of this since April.
I know, I thought we were. So that's what I was confused about. So, all right, I mean, we're just beating stuff up, okay?
Well, right now, so let me clarify something. Sorry, Majority Leader, but I just want to, right now, all of the rules are suspended due to COVID-19 by way of majority vote. So whether it's done by this resolution or not, in order to restore public comment regardless, you would have to either bring back a portion of the rules of order or relinquish the suspension and then re-suspend certain portions to your liking by the way of majority vote. But that's why there's no public comment right now, because the rules were suspended.
Can I make a comment, Majority Leader?
Counselperson Moody, you have the floor.
Yeah, I do think, though, while I support the idea of public comment and even the WebEx, I do agree with President Galimi that to think about the day of, because a lot can transpire in 24 hours. I mean, you know, something could happen today that I may want to speak about. If it happens the day of that I want to speak about, it needs to be given that option if we're going to have public comment. But like I said last meeting, I think even at the beginning of the pandemic, I really think that when it comes to these type of technological issues or questions, that we need to have a committee meeting about with IT and communications that Counselperson Friend chairs, I think that's her committee, and then with the president to figure out, you know, the best solution. Because I think about public comment period and, you know, when to set the cutoff time. And then also think about those things like, you know, comments on the YouTube page has been something I've seen brought up. Also think about if there's an option for us to stream this, not on YouTube, but directly on Facebook through the city page. So all of those types of things, you know, to bring about transparency and give people the ability to comment. I would love to have a committee meeting and talk about all of these things kind of collectively, if possible. But if it came down to Counselperson Friend wanting to bring this forward, I would support it, but I will make an amendment in respect to the president when we can kind of make this something, Madam Majority Leader.
Okay.
Madam Majority Leader?
Yeah.
This is Counselman Beatrice. May I ask President Galimi a question?
You have the floor.
Okay. President Galimi, what you were just saying right now about suspending the rules, I think there's a lot more to this than just saying on this legislation. I mean, we would go back to, what was it before, a minute and a half?
So hold on, hold on. All I was referencing is the reason public comment is not in place right now is because all of the rules were suspended at the beginning of the pandemic. I wasn't commenting on how or why or what the council by way of majority vote would like to do.
Right, I'm not asking that. I'm not asking that. My question to you is, what would we have to do to get it, to just suspend the, like, reenact the rule for public comment and we can go forward?
By way of motion, yes.
Yes. So we don't need to go through all this? We can go through a round the horn to say we want to reenact public comment? And then we could do that?
You could. Effectively, that is what, that is, you know, I'm not trying to cut up this legislation. That is effectively what Counselperson Friend's resolution is trying to do. It just does it in many words.
Okay, I'm only asking because you stated we had the capability to do this from April.
Yes.
I don't, okay, and I'm just kind of confused that why don't we just say, okay, we want? I mean, obviously, I think everybody would like to hear public comment.
Well, there just, there wasn't support for it. I mean, that's a matter of public record. I've brought this up multiple times. There just wasn't support for it. Counselperson Friend is bringing it up again now, and we're talking about it, so. And the other thing I want to clarify, doesn't it say that people can email the city clerk? No later than 5:00 p.m. on the day of council meetings? So it already does say on the day of. The only reason I was being specific of it is someone referenced the prior day, which I don't think would be appropriate.
So can I have the floor?
Counselperson Friend, you have the floor.
So the only question I have then is what time do we want to make it on the day of? 3:00 p.m. on the day of?
3:00 p.m. would work for the clerk, yeah.
Okay. So if Counselperson Moody wants to make a friendly amendment to that, that would be great.
Yeah, to limit time, could change it prior to the meeting tonight that we don't have to do it on the floor and then have to go through all the nine, yay, yay, yay.
Just throwing this out there, but do we want to? I believe that what Counselperson Moody suggested was having a committee meeting to meet with the web people and with the clerks so that we can kind of figure out what works for everybody.
Well, for that, that was for many things, though. I apologize, I wanted to jump in on that. This is just public comment. I think we pretty much have that in the bag. I mean, this has been a capability since April, you know, stated multiple times throughout the year. Like, there's nothing to work out here. It's, we can do public comment if the council by majority vote wants to bring it back.
I recommend putting it in committee.
Why? Like, what other questions do you have that we would work in committee?
Talking to me?
Well, yes.
Oh, okay. Why? Because it's, it's a small, we've got a lot of discussion about it. So let's find out what we can do, what we can't do, and just move on with it.
With respect to time, I think we should go around and ask quickly if there's support for this so that we can move through the rest of the agenda. Counsel, First District, I am not in support of this at this time. I'd like to put it in committee. Counselperson Burmaster?
I'm sorry, I'd like to put it in committee as well.
It's a moot point, but Counselperson Friend?
Yeah, I don't see anything that we would work out in committee that we haven't just worked out right now. We've already done it. If the concern is to not, it's just time, let's head in. And let's go ahead and do this tonight, and it'll be done.
Counselperson Miola?
Thank you, Ms. Majority Leader. If we're already receiving public comment through emails and we already have the capabilities of receiving public comment through, as President Galimi said, we already have this capability. Once again, the legislation is a moot point because we're already doing this. Thank you. Committee.
Counselperson Moody?
I have no problem if the clerks feel okay and they get somebody that wants to address the council for a little while at about 3:00 p.m. I'm cool with that. So I'm okay with bringing this up.
Counselperson Beatrice?
I'm going to say put it in committee. We're already doing it now. Once we get the emails and then we work this out, then I'm all for bringing the public comment right back.
Counselperson Williamson?
Do you hear me?
Yes, I heard you. Thank you. Counselperson LaMedico?
It appears that the council wants to put it in committee, so we'll put it in committee.
Counselperson DeBrango?
I would vote on it tonight. It didn't seem too difficult. It's right there playing black and white. We're only going to make one change, 3:00 p.m. If we vote on it tonight, then when we do advertise about the common council meeting, maybe President Galimi can put down that you can, if you get your information in by 3:00 p.m., you will be able to join in on the public comment period. Obviously, we'll follow the same rules, three minutes, whatever it may be. So I don't mind voting on it tonight, so I'm good with it.
Thank you. Judge, I know you want to weigh in on this. You have the floor. Judge Garamone?
Oh, yes. Well, I think the president was correct. If you're going to do anything in that regard, you should do something that has some structure. So because you have to reserve time in the meeting like you did in the regular meeting, you have to have some guidelines. And as, I discussed this with Charles Brown also the other day. He said, you know, this is a comment, let's not participate. So people are allowed to comment. And you, because of the situation we have now, which is so difficult, we would, if you did it in a, bringing back the rule, comment period, you would set forth the time, you would set how much time a person had if you wanted to do that again. And the methodology, I would have to be worked out. I mean, are you going to call them up, or what are you going to do? I think that the idea about putting it in committee was a good idea because I think it isn't just that you say you're going to do it. How are you going to do it? And what mythology are you going to use? And whatever mythology you use, that's the way you'll, the president will have to conduct that period that you set aside. It's like before, a half hour before you actually do your meetings, except for local law hearings. I think that ought to have a structure to it, that's all. And maybe with the help of the president, find out what's available to us. I always thought that there was some technology to do this, but I have to admit that I'm not as familiar with that technology as Mr. Galimi is. So the only suggestion I have is if you're going to do it, you should have a structure of what you're going to do so that you can publish the structure, you know?
Thank you, Judge.
That's quite all right. That's what I think.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
President Galimi, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just want to state some comments, because if someone still does make a motion later to bring this up, I just want to specify a couple of things. One, as this does read, the structure would end up as it's stated in the rules that were adopted at the beginning of the legislative session in 2020. So the structure we do have established. The second thing, the notification. We've already established the notification and sign-up method with our public hearings as well for notifying the clerk. And as Counselman DeBrango stated, I would publish that in the column before our next meeting if we begin this. So it would be in our paper of record as well, that people can do this. And it would also be announced this evening if it was passed. Third, the structure on how this would happen already does take place if people did email. And there was, say, seven people to sign up. We had them in order. I could dial them in. There's nothing else to work out. This is already ready to go. I would have them dialed in. And I would simply just add that back to our order of business at the main meeting. As far as all of the other things that are concerned, if people become unruly within how you've adopted the rules of order, that would establish the structure. I could mute people if there was issues with that. It would be driven the same way public comment was prior. It would just add that allotted time, I think up to 30 minutes to the meeting. I do believe this would be useful. And if the council did decide to vote on this at the main meeting, we do have the structure and technology in place. There would be no issues implementing this by the next meeting, and it would be orderly and could process just fine. So that's, I just wanted to state that. I understand that there were some things that came up where people thought there was question. There's no question this would work perfectly fine and integrate public comment. Not participation, as the judge said, but public con, you know, the judge was correct in stating that, clarifying that. This would integrate the public comment back into our order of business. Okay? I'm all set.
Moving forward, we are going to go with Resolution Number Five. It is a resolution to approve and endorse the Center of 2021 New York Main Street Application. Does anyone have any questions or concerns regarding this? I know we had talked about it.
Which piece should be on the screen at this juncture?
You have it.
Okay. Yeah, we are, yeah, I think the council's ready. The people that are going to be recognized are ready to dial in at 7:00.
Okay.
And that's going to be full council?
Does anyone have any questions regarding it?
I was going to, I didn't see that that you put up right there. You're saying Resolution Five. I have that under Resolution Four. I can't see the screen very well. Yes, I was going to ask this to be full council. I would love all of you guys to join in on this. But that's up to everybody.
I'm in.
I'm in.
Okay, moving on. The next is Resolution to Approve and Endorse, that is, I'm sorry, I skipped them. The Resolution to Approve and Endorse the Center of 2020 New York Main Street Application.
Ms. Majority Leader, could, I think this came from Kate. Could Kate just give us a quick reason why we had it late? And maybe you can give us an update of what's going on so the council knows. I know it's going to, we're going to have to vote for a Thursday rule on this piece. So maybe you can help us out with this, Kate?
Absolutely, Councilman, thank you. So this is just for the common council to show its support for the refugee centers application. for the refugee centers' application for a Main Street grant. So it's not about the city giving out any grant money or bankrolling anything. It's just, like many state grants that are applied for by private entities, especially not-for-profit entities, they require the support of the legislative body in the municipality where they're located. And this was late, because it was all my fault. And Brian Thomas sent this to me around Christmas time, and I totally lost track of it and didn't send it to the council in time. So my apologies for that. Thank you for considering it.
Is everyone on board? Would we like to make this full council?
Yeah, I was just going to say that. Yep, yes.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
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 Okay. Next is ordinance number six. It's a transfer of funds. It is coming from A59092-801, Retirement of Police, in the amount of $32,734, to the Retirement General City and Retirement DPW, A59089-801, 859090-801, in the amount of $9,079 and $23,655. The explanation for the transfer is to reallocate budgets due to variances from New York State provided estimate versus actual.
If there's any additional comment needed, I can comment on this one.
Okay. Next is a Resolution Number Seven. It is Councilmember Friend. It is for her Commissioner of Deeds.
I actually have a whole bunch. I'd like to do them together. I have one for myself, one for Andrew Zigmond, one for Tim Julian, and one for Tracy Maycock. And I would like to, I'll just do all those together, if that's okay with everybody?
Yeah.
We have to vote on them separately.
Yep. We're just going through them one at a time. Does anyone have any concerns with the Commissioner of Deeds, Resolution Number Eight for Andrew, I'm sorry, how did you pronounce that again?
Zigmond.
Zigmond. Resolution Number Nine, Commissioner of Deeds for Tim Julian. Then we do have three ethic board appointments. We have one for Dr. Morris Pearson, one for John Ciccarelli, and one for Emily Raymond. I know that there are two of them that have one sponsor, and then there is the other one, the last one, that has, I believe, a few sponsors to it. Do we, as a council, want to figure out which one we want to appoint at this point? Or do we want to have a board, or have a committee meeting on this?
Well, I have a question. Madam Majority Leader?
Of course.
I was just, I was reading up on it earlier, and Board of Ethics, it says, "No more than three members of the board may be affiliated with the same political party. No member of the Board of Ethics may hold an officer's position in any political party. Except such person may be a member of a county committee or city committee of a political party," and then it goes on further. But now, I know Republican person, Jason, has to be replaced. Is this going to be a person of a political party? We have to appoint a certain political party to this position? I don't know what the others that are on this committee, what their party affiliates are. So I just want to make sure we get it right before we vote on it.
That's actually a good question.
That's a great question.
All right, Councilman.
Go ahead, Frank.
May I have the floor?
You have the floor.
That's a good question, Frank. We can look into that. I'm pretty sure there's an attorney on it. I know one is an independent party person, but we will check that out. I like to refer to this committee until that's verified.
Concur.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so, third, 10, Resolution, Resolution 10, 13, and 14 will be referred to committee.
Thank you for bringing that up, Frank. I wasn't aware of that either.
Next is Resolution Number 11. It is a Commissioner of Deeds for Councilmember Moody.
I don't know about this guy.
Yeah, it's a little questionable.
No, I'm believing.
Resolution Number 12, Councilmember Friend. It is for Tracy E. Maycock, for her Commissioner of Deeds. Everyone good?
Is it Bobby Maycock's sister?
I don't know. It didn't come through me. She must have gone directly to the Department of Legislation.
She's a UFA girl. UFA girl.
Oh, okay.
So with the last seven minutes, is there anything in committee that anyone would like to discuss? Or has any intention of bringing out that they would like to discuss?
Yeah, if you can go to the Public Safety Committee, I'd like to look at that there.
In the Public Safety Committee, absolutely. We have police transparency, we have civil rights law, we have complete streets policy, and we have multiple dwelling surveillances. Which piece would you like to discuss?
Well, Ordinance 11 and Resolution 13.
Okay.
Now, we just covered that tonight, am I right?
Correct.
I strongly believe that the city is doing their best, the following the New York state law, and being open and being transparent. I don't foresee any reason keeping this in there in committee any longer. We did have a public comment period on it. We had no public comment at all on this, so I think it's just a moot point. I think if the city does not follow the guidelines, and we feel as a council that they're not doing the right, you know, giving the right information, and they're not doing the right, then maybe we could revisit it. But to keep it in committee since, I believe it was June, you know, I don't foresee wanting to keep it in there any longer and act on it anymore. But I'm just bringing it out. If everybody is on board with me, I'm willing to take it out. Thanks.
I'll second you on that, Frank.
Just, can I wait?
I didn't hear who was talking first, sorry.
Celeste Friend, I'd like to weigh in just for a second. This is the one that I was planning on, in fact, rescinding anyway, because it's the earlier version of this other one. I do want to point out one thing. If we don't pass some ordinance about this, then when April rolls around and the state looks at us and wants to know what kind of reforms we've done, us, the council, we'll have, the answer will be nothing. So, I mean, obviously, there's not support for this right now. I get that. But it's not going to be a good look down the road, given that the governor has required that we do some reforms.
Counselperson LaMedico, you have the floor.
Well, a lot of the, what we present to the governor is what our plan is, not what we've done. So that's how, that's how the plan is going to be written. So it would behoove us, in all actuality, you know, if you want to bring it up again down the road, and talk to the commission themselves if they think we should talk to them about this, we could put this part on the plan. But this isn't something that we wouldn't want to put in now, because then it's not anything we could put on what we plan to do. You tracking?
I see what you're saying. Yeah. I see what you're saying.
Okay, thank you.
And to add to Councilman LaMedico's, the city council does have to vote on this, I know, a report that's going to be drafted. So before it even goes to the governor, we have to vote on it.
Okay.
I agree. And when, and when the administration does submit their report, or whatever they want to give to the governor, I'm sure they're going to run it by the council, take a look at it. And at that time, we could either support it, or maybe make some amendments, or request to make amendments. But I'm sure we have to have a report to the governor to get the proper funding and things of that nature for our public safety.
Mrs. Majority Leader, may I have the floor for two seconds?
Counselperson Miola, you have the floor.
Your two seconds is over, Councilman.
Frankie DeBrango, of course, you know we have a deadline of April 2021 on this. So I'm assuming, I'm assuming that we should have the deadline of our last council meeting, or the first council meeting in March. So you may want to get an update as soon as possible with the committee's summary on this, so we can make it legislation, and we can accomplish this before the deadline, sir.
I'm okay with that. My intentions are having the chief and maybe Councilman Moody, who's involved in Police Reform Committee there, to maybe give us some kind of actions that are taken, and if we have any comment, and we can assist in any way we can. But yeah, I would like somebody representing the administration as well, say, listen, this is what we're doing. Here's how we're doing it. And I think this is going to fly, you know, by the governor. We're going to get a pass, and the governor's going to give us the funding. I'm sure that we're not going to slip up and do something that is illegal, or something that's not correct, and we are going to be able to get our funding. Because I strongly believe that we are leaps and bounds ahead of a lot of other cities in the state on this matter.
I agree. I agree.
So, Councilmember, do you believe that there should be a deadline by the last council meeting in February for their summary? Because if it comes to us, it goes in committee, and then our last vote would be March. So I do believe that there needs to be a deadline, or we won't make the governor's deadline. So if the council needs, we have to come to a consensus right now on a deadline for their summary.
What are you, you're asking me?
We need to set something up in order to have things nailed down by the end of February, first week of March.
Right. But we are, what are we setting up? Are we waiting for the administration to give us something? Some guidelines to go by? Or are we writing our own guidelines that submit to the city? I'd rather be at, you know, the city submitting us the report that they're going to give to the governor, and then, and then we could at least look at it and pass it.
The initial.
This should already been decided. You guys should have this figured out already by now, exactly who's going to get it. If they're going to give it to us, you really need to work this out this week on exactly how this is going to work. I'm glad you mentioned it now, because we'd be jumping through hoops about three months from now if we didn't have this conversation.
Councilman Moody, you want to add anything? Because you are on that reform committee.
Yeah, I've been trying to add it for some time. The draft, the draft will be completed. We have a deadline to complete it by the end of January, and to submit it to people by the end of January. So you will have it by the beginning of February. That's already been adopted by our working timeline.
Okay.
We should have the first, the first, first meeting in February, then you're saying, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Madam Majority Leader?
Counselperson. Yes, she has.
I just, I got one question for Counselperson Friend. There, the legislation about public comment, when they said going to do a committee, if it's going to a committee, can, what committee would that go to? Can we have a committee meeting as soon as possible? Because I do believe we need to have the public comment back. So just let me know, you know, I think, what committee is that going into?
Well, you don't know yet, because you're not in the main meeting.
Okay.
I would suggest the committee hall.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Okay. So that is.
I was just moving it.
All right, so that.
See, I recommend, let's hold off on these, both of these pieces. We'll wait till we get something in our hands, and then we'll, we'll discuss it and vote on it.
I wanted to ask, I understand Councilman Beatrice's question, but we were talking about the civil rights law and transparency legislation. So did something get missed there in translation?
No.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought you guys were done with.
It's okay. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something, so.
All right. So this adjourns the precaucus caucus meeting of January 6, 2021.
Okay.
Second.
Everyone stay on. I am going to.
Is there a second?
Someone did second it, sorry. I was just, all right, I will be calling the main meeting to order at 7:10. That should be eight minutes from now, if anyone needs to grab a drink of water. There will be no change in WebEx. Everyone should just stand in WebEx, and I'll call the meeting to order at 7:10. Thank you. Okay, it is January 6, 2021, the first council meeting of the new year. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
McNeil, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Moody, Beatrice, Williamson, LaMedico, DeBrango, Glimy, all present.
Thank you. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where we should stand, my nation.
We'll now have a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council, but also, we would like to recognize Mitch Ford and the mayor's wife, Mrs. Paul Mary, as they are recovering from COVID, and need our thoughts as well. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to start. The first order of business this evening is public hearing. We have no legislation this evening that requires public hearing, and there is no public hearing scheduled. So the public hearing is now closed. Next order of business, the minutes. Would we like to go over the minutes from the previous meeting, or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, all right. Well, I was just displaying them. All right, there's a motion to dispense of the reading of the minutes. Is there a second?
DeBrango, second.
Thank you. DeBrango is the second. Quick roll call, vote. McNeil?
Yes.
Burmaster?
Yes.
Friend? Miola?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
LaMedico?
Yes.
DeBrango?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next order of business, communications from the mayor. Do we have any this evening in particular?
No communications.
All right, do we have any cash reports?
We have a cash report from November 2020. A total of $27 million received and filed.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next order of business, reports from city officers. I'd like to start with Chief Ingersoll, please.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
I just want to take a minute and talk for a second about the impact that COVID is still having on the fire department right now. The month of December saw over 20 members test positive for COVID-19. Thankfully, most of those members have made a complete recovery, returned to work. But we've had over 30 members impacted by COVID-19 since the start of this pandemic, and it continues to not slow down for us. Our calls for service have increased. For 2020, the fire department responded to over 14,400 calls for service. And obviously, those calls haven't slowed down. Now, we're in quite the, we're in quite the marathon right now. And our firefighters are getting a little tired, to be honest. They're right along with healthcare workers. They're on the front lines, and they continue to respond to calls. But it's, there's a lot of calls going on this evening, right now, as we speak. Two of the hospitals, local hospitals, are on a soft diversion, meaning that unless you're having a heart attack or a serious health issue, our angel's are taking patients right now to Rome and to Little Falls Basset Hospital. And that's to give our local hospitals some time to reset and get ready for more patients. Like I said, COVID-19, we're here for a long time. It's a marathon for our people. And they're doing a great job. They're doing the best they can. We've got a lot of PPE for them, and it's just a long race that we're in. And I'd like to commend the firefighters for coming to work every day and putting their best foot forward, and continuing to provide the great service that they have.
Thank you. Are they getting their vaccines yet?
Yeah, so December 23, we were able to start getting vaccines through MVHS, and very thankful for that. We've had a number of firefighters take advantage of the vaccine and receive the vaccinations. We continue to offer the firefighters vaccination. And, you know, it's not mandatory. We're encouraging it. It's a personal choice at this time. And part of, you know, it's really going to help add to our personal protection for our members and their families when they leave, when they leave work. Again, you know, every call they're going on, they have to treat it as though a person has COVID. And it's taxing on the guys.
When do you think you'll be complete with the vaccinations for the people that actually want them?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you.
But, okay, it's a two-stage vaccine, correct? That you're going to?
Yes.
That you're getting, correct? And when do you think you should be done with the second set of vaccines?
So the second dose is going to, the second dose for anybody that received it on the first day that it was available, the second dose will start January 13, and they'll continue on for the rest of January. So again, we keep on offering it out and making sure that, you know, if our guys want it, that it's going to be available for them. And truly want to thank MVHS for helping us out with that.
What percentage of your department is actually getting it? That has decided they would like?
We're hovering somewhere between 70 and 75% right now.
That's good. That's good. So, you know, by the first or second week of February, they should all have the antibodies ready to go, and hopefully that should take care of a lot of your issues that you're having, correct?
Yeah, that's the hope, you know. And if they are to get it, hopefully they just have minor symptoms. You know, we're going to be talking to some guy. Like I said, we've had a number of people have it. Thankfully, they haven't. We've had a couple of members have a real hard bout with it, that they were out for quite some time in December. But we've all made good recoveries from it right now.
God bless them. I know I had it. And it took me out for a couple of weeks myself, so I understand how tough it is. But I'd like to commend your department for the great job they're doing in working through this virus. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Ingersoll. Chief Williams, would you like to report for the Bureau of Police?
I would. I'd like to speak about the unprecedented amount of gun violence we've seen here in the city this past year. And we're not alone. We're seeing unreal numbers, record numbers in other cities in New York State as well. And I basically attribute to three things. Air reform, increase the age of responsibility, and the COVID-19. Just this month alone, we had nine people shot. And this year, we saw a total of 46 people shot compared to last year, 31. And example of some of the gunfire we're seeing on the 1100 block of Lenox Ave, two nights ago, we had two groups of people firing at each other with handguns, two different vehicles. There were no reports that anybody could be struck, so I can assume most of those bullets were stray. This is a community problem, not only a police problem. One, the problems we're seeing, especially with COVID-19, is that grand juries are closing up. They're not having grand juries a lot of times. Cases are backed up as a result of that. There's no responsibility for people that we're arresting for a lot of these gun offenses. In fact, I've got two homicide cases that get through grand jury. So that's part of the problem. The other problem is we've made also a record amount of arrests, which still awfully possess handguns and retired handguns. The problem is when we make these arrests, they're immediately, a powdering it, getting released on their own recagnots. And now the depression with the many gun offenders, there are no immediate consequences. So we are facing some serious problems. You know, one of the things I want to commend is my own people. They have done a fantastic job, especially making these dangerous arrests. And any of these situations can go wrong when we make these arrests. And to their credit, we have not, like we had in other cities, where officers have had to use their weapon in order to make these arrests. And really, it's remarkable that the job they've done out there. So as we speak about these reforms and transparency, it'd also be nice to be heard from our elected officials in the community about supporting the police. So I think overall, we have shown in our community that we are very proactive, and that we've already done a lot of these reforms before they put a topic for other people. So I end by saying that we are continuing to work hard on this problem. We're working with our law enforcement partners. And again, this is a community problem. We need the community's help as well.
Thank you, chief. As well as complimenting the fire department, I certainly don't want to not compliment the police department for the tremendous job they're doing. I know you guys are out there every day. I see yous out there every day. And the quality of your police force and the professionalism is second to none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Corporation counsel. I believe we have multiple corporation counsel on this evening.
Hi, counsel president. I don't have anything to report.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see, do we have a representative from Urban and Economic Development today? I believe you may have dialed in by phone.
Yes, this is Brian.
Thank you.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you very much. I didn't want to skip you guys if you were here. Okay. All right, so before we start our legislation review.
Mike, is Dave Short here? Is he on?
I don't see him on the list. Commissioner Short, are you on one of the cell phone dial-ins?
Council president, can you hear me?
Ah, there you are. Perfect. Yes.
Good evening, everyone. How's everybody doing?
Very good, very good.
A little low, Dave. Could you speak up a little?
Let me see what I can do. I would like to just tell you that COVID has hopefully saved our members. We've had many people have a bolus but did not get sick, so we're holding our own at the DPW. Recreational use, our steel heli is ready to go. We've had enough personnel from staffing to running. I guess one issue has come up.
Does somebody have their TV on, their radio on, the rim problem?
No, actually, so I would appreciate, I think it's actually just background chatter in Commissioner Short's cell phone signal. So if we could just listen to the update, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
As far as recreational use, South Woods has been open for people to hike or walk or ski. FT Proctor has been plowed for our walkers there to get people out and about, since people have limited use of gymnasiums and other recreational activities. One question that always comes up is about the eagle, whether or not people can get up there or not. We reserve that for cross country skiing, to groom that. We do have tines, so we don't plow that. But so far, everything is going to plan, and hopefully everybody will have a start of a good year here.
Dave, I had a question that I wanted you to talk about. Was the main guardian road coming down? Some, I'm getting some questions about why we don't plow that. Can you explain to the reason for that?
Yes, we don't, we've never plowed that road, only because we use that for our cross country skiing, when we groom that with snow. when we groom that with snow. We have to have a base of 12 to 18 inches of snow before we can put the groomer on it. So we limit our plowing to the lower half of the road going up to South Woods. And that way, people can utilize South Woods, not all the way up to the Eagle. If you would still like to walk or snowshoe it, that's fine, but, you know, to plow it and then try to groom it, that creates a problem for our cross-country skiers.
Celeste, you had a question on this. Would you like to ask it?
What we're gonna do is, if there's nothing else from Commissioner Short, Councilman LaMedico and anyone else, I thank you. All the comments today with the departmental reports have been extremely useful, but please address the chair so that we can make sure that we keep the meeting in order. All right, so thank you.
You're doing a good job, Mike.
It's all right. I just, you know, we gotta keep tabs on that so things don't get out of hand.
President Kalimi?
Yes.
President Kalimi, I was unfortunately muted a moment ago. Can, is it okay if I ask Commissioner Short something?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you to the clerk for pointing out that I was talking but not, but muted. So when you say the South Woods, do you mean, that's what people also refer to as the switchbacks?
The, the switchbacks, yeah.
Okay, so we don't plow master garden road, but people still can drive that gate where they can park and then walk up the switchbacks if they want to, correct?
Right now, parking is limited to the Parks Garage area, so they can walk up from there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the reason we don't plow is in order to make it available for snowshoeing and cross-country skiing? Okay, I didn't, okay. So do we, do you sort of play it by ear each year as to when exactly you're gonna close those gates and stop plowing? Does it depend upon snowfall, for instance?
Yeah, the gates get closed at Rosco Cotton Park every November 1st. We've shut everything down.
Okay.
And then we open up probably May 1st.
So we, you do it at a pretty regular schedule. You don't just sort of wait for the fall and then go ahead and close it?
No, we do not. It's November 1st to May 1st.
November 1st to May 1st. Okay. Okay, that's great. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you very much for everybody's patience with my muting.
Okay. I believe that ends the departmental reports. Thank you very much. And thank you, everyone, for staying in the meeting and contributing because it is necessary. And we do have quite a bit of the public watching on YouTube. We're going to move the order of business around just temporarily to recognize members of the UFD. Which councilperson would like to present?
I will.
This. Yes, I do believe.
Councilman Beatrice will do this.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see, do we have Hartnett, Devens, and Elsante? Can you guys unmute and just acknowledge that you can hear us because we are going to recognize you?
Yes, we can hear you.
We can hear you all clear.
I can hear you, sir.
Thank you very much. Councilman Beatrice, please present and read the resolution recognizing members of the Utica Fire Department.
Thank you. And thank you firefighters for being on the call. I really appreciate you getting on. This is sponsored by my, by Councilman Beatrice and Burmaster, and I'm not sure if it's the full council, but there's other council people on. Okay, it's the resolution recognizing members of the Utica Fire Department. Whereas, the president of the fire union and the fire chief of the city of Utica has stated that the fire rescue on November 15th, 2020, is one of the best rescue efforts in recent times and deserves recognition by the city of Utica. Whereas, Truck Company One, Platoon Four, firefighters together with individuals that should be a part of this resolution, did the above, did on the above date respond to a fire on Oak Street, the city of Utica, that involved 1210 and 1212 Oak Street. The Utica firefighters, as to their custom, were concerned about whether or not there were any occupants or animals trapped in the building. The crew conducted a high-risk search under the, under fire conditions that made, that made time of an, of the essence. A male victim was located several feet from the window at 1212 Oak Street. The man in his twenties was pulled out of the bathroom window and rescued by firefighters during a fully involved fire. The male, the male was, the male was revived on the front lawn of the fire scene while other firefighters battled the blaze behind him. It was learned as a result of these brave firefighters that the male made a full recovery only with minor cuts that resulted from being pulled through the window of broken glass. Whereas Lieutenant Gary Elsante, who was in the building still looking for survivors, had to be pulled out of the same window as the entire room was engulfed in flames. It was members of this, it was members of this crew that came to the lieutenant's rescue and helped bail him out of the window just in the nick of time. Whereas, it was Lieutenant Gary Elsante, firefighter Brian Hartnett, firefighter Brian Devens, who were assigned to make entry through the first floor window on the side of the house to search the area where the victim was reported. Be it resolved that the common council of the city of Utica does once again acknowledge the bravery of the firefighters of the city of Utica, and be it further resolved, the rescue person does owe his life to all the firefighters at the scene that day, and the brave men of Truck Company One, Platoon Four, firefighters Brian Devens, Brian Hartnett, and most of all Lieutenant Gerald Elsante, for their selfless and heroic act as described above, for putting the life of a stranger at the highest risk to themselves above all else. We salute the men and women of the Utica Fire Department. And I just want to tell you guys, I really appreciate everything you do. I think we've got a number one top-notch department. And I know during COVID here, you guys are struggling more than anything, and I really feel for you. And you guys can always reach out if you ever need anything from me or any of the other council people. And I'll be, I'll be sure, one way or another, to work with the clerk to get you your awards.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Is that gonna be full council?
Councilman Williamson, can you make that a motion?
Can I make a motion, make that full council?
I'd like to second it, LaMedico.
Okay, any opposed to that motion? I don't think we need to do a roll call. Okay, it's full council. Your votes, McNeil?
Yes.
Burmaster?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Miola?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
LaMedico?
Yes.
DeBranco?
Yes.
I need to adapt it.
Thank you. And the full council and the council president, seriously, thank you for your efforts. Really appreciate it. And we'll see that you all receive a copy. And I would appreciate, clerk, if you could print and frame this in, in the same format that we would do a proclamation so that it can also be presented to the firemen included. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, we'll be doing a fourth one for the, their entire house also. I've talked to the clerk already too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, next order of business is petitions, remonstrances, appeals, and legislation from the floor. First ward, Councilwoman and Majority Leader Maria McNeil, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, I just wanted to wish everybody a happy new year. I hope we can go into 2021 with as many healthy people as possible. I know that things are spreading pretty fast, but I just want to remind everybody to take as many precautions as they possibly can. Just keep you and yourself, your family as safe as possible. That's all we can do at this point. And that's it. Moving forward, resolution number five. I believe this resolution was going to be full council. It is a resolution to approve and endorse the Center of 2021 New York Main Street Application. It is, whereas applicants for the New York Main Street NYMS program were made available through the New York State and administered by the New York State Officer and Community Renewal under the direction of the Housing Trust Fund Corporation. And whereas the NYMS funding program was created and provided resources to assist New York State's communities with Main Street and downtown revitalization efforts through investment in projects and provide economic development and housing opportunities in downtown mixed-use commercial districts. And whereas, the center is eligible to submit an application for a single-site, standalone, shovel-ready renovation project. And whereas, the Center and Downtown Revitalization Initiative Strategic Investment Plan Priority Project sponsors is proposing to submit an application for funding to assist the rehabilitation of their building at 201 Bleecker Street. And whereas, the Center is requesting up to $500,000 in funding from NYMS with the required 25% match being provided by the organization. And whereas, a formal resolution supporting the Center's 2021 Downtown Anchor Project is required for the proposed NYMS application. Now therefore, be it resolved that the common council of the city of Utica hereby does approve and endorse the submission of a grant requested by the Center under the 2021 New York Main Street Program for the rehabilitation of 201 Bleecker Street. I move to, I move this piece of legislation.
Frank Miola, motion second?
Oh, thank you. I was muted. I was calling for a second. Thank you, Councilman Miola. Your vote, McNeil? Burmaster?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Miola?
Yes.
Moody? Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
LaMedico?
Yes.
DeBranco? Thank you very much. Clerk, thank you. Majority Leader, you have the floor.
Next, I'd like to move ordinance number six. It is a transfer of funds from 2020, 2021 fiscal year regarding retirement. It is a, the explanation for this transfer is to reallocate budgets due to various variances from New York State provided by estimate versus actual. It is from A59092-801 Retirement of Police to A59089801 and A59090-801 Retirement DPW in the amount of three, or 32,734.
Okay. Your votes on this ordinance, McNeil? Or is there a second? Sorry, is there a second?
Motion second, motion second, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Miola's the second. McNeil?
Yes.
Burmaster?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Miola?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
LaMedico?
Yes.
DeBranco?
Yes.
I need to adapt it.
Thank you.
One last thing, Mr. President. With regards to resolution number 10, 13, and 14 with the ethics board appointment, I wanted to thank Councilman DeBranco for bringing it to our attention with the, the different parties that need to be on the board. And we've also confirmed with our clerk that she will be looking into it and letting us know who is of what party, that way that we can make our decision regarding that.
So would you like to move to introduce in place 10, 13, and 14 in committee?
Yes, I would.
Okay, is there a second? DeBranco's the second? All right, all the committees have nine people, but is there a specific chair you'd like, committee-wise?
The committee of the whole.
Okay, committee of the whole. Perfect. Any opposed to placing those in committee? Going once? Twice? Okay. 10, 13, and 14 are in committee. And clerk, please acknowledge on the floor that you will be gathering the required information.
I will be taking care of that information.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's it for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Second district, Councilman Burmaster, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to reiterate and wish everybody a happy and safe new year. I too want to thank the fire department and the police department. There was two incidents, that fire was only four houses away from where I live. And prior to that, there was a shooting two houses away. And I want to thank the fire department, police department for doing the things that we have no idea what they do. And they make us safe, and they continue to do so. And I appreciate it. I guess that's all we have to say at this time, but thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Third district, councilperson Friend, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to talk a little bit tonight about some very disturbing information that I'm getting or hearing from St. Ease and from some nurses there. Of course, we all know that COVID is really bad right now and getting worse. And the numbers in the Mohawk Valley are going up every day. Mohawk Valley is the, has the highest positivity rate in the state, I believe, at this time. But apparently, St. Ease is dangerously understaffed in terms of nurses. I think we all remember that over the summer, MBHS had to lay off a number of, a lot of staff, but including registered nurses. Over the summer, they laid off 77 registered nurses. I think most of us probably remember that. They claim that they are doing their best to bring those nurses back, but there are sort of conflicting reports around that. And I'm hearing reports that of nurses who were furloughed or laid off and who have yet to receive a phone call from MBHS. The MBHS has not yet canceled elective surgeries, even as our ICUs are filling up. And we're, you know, we have this raging pandemic and lots of people in the hospital. And yet, they're still carrying on with elective surgeries, which is very distressing. I think that this would be a really bad time for anybody to get sick, obviously. I feel really grateful that my appendix decided, you know, that it needed to come out back in April in the early days of the pandemic. And I got excellent care at St. Luke's. But I think this would be a really bad time if you broke your leg or, I don't know, what have you. So I'm calling on MBHS to cancel their elective surgeries and to redouble their efforts to hire the necessary staff. And I also think it would be good if the council could consider, down the road, looking into passing a resolution that would support safe staffing levels at a New York State legislative level. We need to encourage the New York State Legislature to pass a law about safe staffing levels, not just for registered nurses, but for all essential healthcare workers for the sake of their safety, but also for the sake of the safety of patients. So that was, I wanted to say that. You know, obviously, we all need to continue to do whatever we can to stay safe, but clearly enough people are getting sick and landing in the hospital. And the hospital sounds like a really, a really bad place to have to be right now. Okay, so that's that. I do have some legislation tonight. I would like to, to introduce some commissioner of deeds legislations. So this is resolution number seven, Commissioner of Deeds. So this is resolution number seven, um, Commissioner of Deeds, resolved that the common council does hereby appoint the following person as Commissioner of Deeds in and for the City of Utica for a two-year term commencing January 6th, 2021 and ending December 31, 2022. Celeste Friend, 37 Emerson Ave, Utica, New York, 13501.
Miola. Thank you. I'm going to request that somebody else moves this, uh, since it is you who is the Commissioner.
I'll sponsor it. That way there she doesn't have to sponsor it too.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, uh, McNeil moved the legislation. Miola seconded the legislation. Your votes, McNeil.
Yes.
Burmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yes.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
LaMedico.
Yay.
DeBrango.
Yes.
Nine needs adopted.
Thank you. Councilperson, you have the floor.
Um, thank you. Okay, uh, resolution number eight. This is another Commissioner of Deeds, resolved that the Common Council does hereby appoint the following person as Commissioner of Deeds in and for the City of Utica for a two-year term commencing January 6th, 2021 and ending December 31, 2022. Andrew Zigment, 37 Emerson Ave, Utica, New York, 13501. Uh, Andrew, Andy is my, uh, domestic partner, so I don't know if somebody else wants to maybe sponsor this.
That's fine. I just wanted someone else to sponsor yours. Um, it wasn't, it wasn't that personal. Uh, is there a second on this?
Second, DeBrango.
Miola motion to second.
Thank you very much. Um, McNeil. Your votes, McNeil. Thank you. Burmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yes.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
LaMedico.
Yay.
DeBrango.
Yes.
Okay.
Nine needs adopted.
Okay, resolution number nine, Commissioner of Deeds, resolved that the Common Council does hereby appoint the following person as Commissioner of Deeds in and for the City of Utica for a two-year term commencing January 6th, 2021 and ending December 31, 2022. Timothy Julian, 137 Higbee Road, Utica, New York, 13501.
Okay, and that's the motion to introduce, Councilperson Friend?
It is.
Thank you. Uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, McNeil is the second. Your votes, McNeil.
Yes.
DeB-, uh, sorry, Burmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yes.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
LaMedico.
Good.
DeBrango.
Yes.
Nine needs adopted.
Okay.
And then I have just one more. Uh, this is, uh, resolution number 12, Commissioner of Deeds, resolved that the Common Council does hereby appoint the following person as Commissioner of Deeds in and for the City of Utica for a two-year term commencing January 6th, 2021, ending December 41, 2022. Tracy E. Maycock, 902 Simons Place, Utica, New York, 13502.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. Burmaster.
Okay, Burmaster is the second. Your votes, McNeil.
Yes.
Burmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yes.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
LaMedico.
Yay.
DeBrango.
Yes.
Okay.
Nine needs adopted.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Um, okay, I, next order of business, I would like to pull something out of committee in order to rescind it or dispense with it.
So you're making a motion to dispense from committee. Which committee are you dispensing something from?
This is the legislation in the Public Safety Committee, and it is ordinance number 11, Police Transparency, dated 6/17/2020. And I just wanted to dispense.
A motion to dispense of this legislation. Is there a second?
Beatrice.
Okay, your votes, McNeil.
Yes.
Burmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Yes.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
LaMedico.
Yay.
DeBrango.
Yes.
Nine yays dispensed. Okay, Clerk, please see that that's removed from the public safety packet.
Yeah, I will. Okay, and I have one more business, order of business tonight. Um, I would like to introduce, um, and move, um, this is resolution number three, Resolution to Restore Public Comment During the COVID-19 Pandemic. Whereas COVID-19 has interrupted the normal way of the City of Utica performing its public functions, and yet the public comment remains an important means by which the Utica Common Council ensures that it remains responsive to the needs of the public it serves. Whereas we have at our disposal all of the necessary technology to include public input, even when we cannot safely all occupy the same room, be it resolved that for the duration of the suspension of Utica Common Council's regular rules of order, public comment at council meetings shall be conducted by way of WebEx in accordance with all the stipulations of the Council's regular rules of order. Members of the public may email the cityclerk@cityclerk@cityofutica.com no later than 3:00 PM on the day of council meetings to arrange to be placed on the list to call in via WebEx to make comments to the common council. Um, and I'd like to move that, and then, um, I'd like to talk about it a little bit.
All right, um, is there a second?
Second.
Who was that second?
Dylan.
Okay, we have a second from Moody. Okay, if you'd like to, uh, debate and/or, um, state something about this legislation before it goes to a vote, uh, please request the floor.
I'd like the floor, Mr. President.
Councilperson Friend, you have the floor.
So I think that this is pretty straightforward. We had a, a good discussion about it in the pre-meeting. Um, there's really no details to be worked out. Uh, we have the technological capacity now. Um, and in fact, other city meetings have people calling in by, by way of WebEx, for example, Zone Board of Appeals. Um, so this is pretty straightforward and easy to do. Uh, 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting both gives the clerks enough time to organize emails, but also ensures that the public, uh, knows what we hear, what's on our agenda before they decide whether to comment. This is, um, having public comment by all the same rules that we, um, adopted a year ago for public comment, except that people will be calling them on the phone. Um, it will actually be a little easier to control because the president will have, um, the capacity to mute people. So in some ways, it'll actually be subject to being a little bit more orderly than, than we have sometimes seen on, on the rare occasion at the regular in-person public comment. I think this is good for the people of Utica. Um, these are such trying times. We're all so far away from each other by necessity. And I think that we need to do whatever we can to, uh, to reengage the public and to make sure that we are still listening to them. Thank you. And I yield the floor.
Okay, we do have a second on this. Is there anything else that, uh, people would like to request the floor on, or can I bring this to a vote?
Well, I, 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 I had a question on this.
Yes.
So, Mike, you're saying that, uh, with the current, with the WebEx that we're using, it would be, it would be seamless. There wouldn't be any holdups to this. I know that Zoom, it's a lot easier. But do you feel that we could get through this without any hip cups? And we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna have any technical issues?
Technically, yeah, I think we're all set to go.
Okay. If, if that's the case, uh, when it comes to me, I'm gonna vote yes.
Okay. Anyone else, uh, would like the floor?
And ju- just for clarity, we are only, it's only if someone signs, I guess it would only be, um, if someone signs up, right? And then the time will still be, I didn't, amongst, or would they have a max time?
Uh, no, it would, it would be exactly as it was prior. Um, I'm trying to just recite from, uh, memory, but I would have to divide it amongst people that are there, et cetera. But it would be by request. It would follow the exact rules of order that were adopted if you were to pass this legislation, yes.
And they have a max time, like if they don't?
Yeah.
That they would have, okay, okay.
Well, that's the issue, you know, I don't, I'm gonna have the, the same three minutes, or how, what are we gonna do? I thought that was one of the reasons initially, we wanted to actually put it in the, uh, put it in the committee, so we could write down what these issues were.
No, it's, it's, so, um,
Bring it up, hold for it, I don't have an issue.
Well, hang on, hang on. So, so you adopted a slightly different, um, flavor of the rules of order, uh, for public comment in, in this legislative session. Um, I could pull them and read them, but it would be exactly the same. I think the only difference was, is you added some amendments to it for groups. Um,
I'd like to hear, I don't know what I'm gonna be voting for, I don't like that.
Well, it's, you, you are, you are, so hang, hang on just one second. Let me, let me pull the, uh, let me pull the original rules. Um, let's see here. Rules designated. Meetings, I hope Ecode 360 is. Let's see, public comments, public comments. Here we are. So it would essentially be the exact same rules that we were following until the rules were suspended and in-person meetings had to stop due to COVID-19. Um, so everything that we debated, we had many long debates, the council already did adopt these, uh, by unanimous approval, um, so that the time would be divided and the public comment period would be no more than, um, 30 minutes in total.
So, 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 okay, so what we would do is, let's say we had 10 people that wanted to speak. They each get three minutes apiece, correct?
Um, yes.
Okay, so each one would actually have to be preloaded on, onto the WebEx, because they, and we wouldn't have to wait for them to dial in.
Correct. I would actually, so here's the, the, this is, so let me explain exactly what I would be doing. Because they would be giving the city clerk their phone number and their name, I would be actually calling them from the WebEx meeting so that their name would be displayed appropriately for record and recording. And then, um, I would be able to, uh, mute and unmute them when their time could, um, you know, started and, and ended, um, within accordance with the rules. And then the people that were signed up to speak would also be on the actual WebEx during the whole public comment period, waiting for their actual, uh, time to speak. And then outside that, they would be invited to continue watching the meeting, um, either on the link that they had or, uh, on YouTube after that. So this technically is completely all set to go.
And you don't feel we need to do a dry run on this? You feel confident that we, we could run it through without any issues?
This one, another question.
I've actually brought people into the meeting for some of our hearings prior in this same format. Yes.
Okay.
How, how do they, how do they read the rules? How are they gonna know what, you know what I mean? Usually, usually you say, have you read the rules?
If, if we bring this portion of the rules of order back, I'll run this portion of the public comment rules the same way I did prior. So they'll all be on the meeting. I'll read that, you know, those rules that they, that they have, and they'll speak just like we were before. It'll just be on the WebEx.
Right, President Golemi.
So this is,
Hold on, hold on. I think somebody else is requesting.
The reason that I just wanted to put it into the, right, to the committee, because we're sort of having a committee meeting on this now.
If you guys would like to put this in committee, that's, that's on your, you already established these rules.
We're gonna, we're gonna hash it out in the middle of our council meeting. That's fine.
I think it's that important to all of us to bring the public back into our meetings that we want to do this now. So I think that's quite evident.
Right. Pre- pre- President Golemi.
Yeah.
Councilman Beatrice, one question. Well, Jack said what I was just gonna say. When I, in a pre-meeting, I said, put it in committee, but we basically just had a committee meeting on the floor. But my last question to you is, so the question, it's 30 minutes, public comment, 10 people, they each get three minutes. What if there's three people? They'd get 20, they'd, they'd get whatever?
Uh, I'm bringing it up right now.
It's maxed at three minutes. Oh, maxed at three minutes. Okay. Okay. All right. That's all I wanted to know. Okay.
And so here you are, right here. Um, you guys, this, these,
differently.
This is the public comment period that was unanimously approved. It's on the screen right now. Uh, this is, um, by way of your adoption, the way I will drive public comment. The only difference.
Four minutes, Mike.
Uh, well, the, right, but my point is, this is, you guys did modify it. That's what I was mentioning earlier. That's why if you wanted to read through this again, but this is the way you have adopted public comment period. The total time is still the same. I will run it in accordance with the rules you've adopted in exact accordance with the way it was happening in person. The only difference will be that it's on WebEx if you approve this resolution.
So you're saying we're gonna give everybody four minutes then, instead of three?
Um, I would argue that you guys, um, said, we're gonna give everyone four, but, uh,
I don't know, and, and you're right there, but, but, uh, but, but,
No, that's the group. That's the group. Um, that's, in Section C, that is the way you guys, uh, set up how groups would speak.
If a group, it can take the full 30 minutes, or 22, and two other people have four minutes each.
Exactly, exactly.
Mr. Golemi might have the floor, please.
Councilman Miola, you have the floor.
Mr. Golemi, if there's a, a, a large amount of people, who's gonna decide who's going to have the opportunity to speak and not, not speak?
Um, that is,
Because we can only put so many in the WebEx.
That, well, so.
First come, first served.
What do we do then, sir?
So this is why we wanted to,
Is that, is that the protocol?
Again, this is why we should have had it in committee. And it was less,
Please let the chair address this question, and I am interpreting your rules when I address this question. Okay. Your rules state that we only have 30 minutes. The amount of seconds within 30 minutes is equivalent to the amount of people we can have join a meeting. It's unreasonable to think that each person would be able to speak for one second. So if we adopt this this evening, and we do have 50 people who are signing up, um, what I would ask is that potentially we just have an amendment so that, uh, we cannot have, uh, let's see, 30 minutes?
Well, once again, sir, you're deciding who's gonna, who's gonna make the decision on who's gonna speak and not speak. That's the question.
Well, I, I mean, the, the reality is, that was the same issue I had with the way we modified it prior. The time is divided equally. It is specified. Um,
Whoever signed the book first got to speak first.
Yeah, exactly. And people would endlessly sign up.
Same rules we had before. These are the exact same rules we had before. We're just doing it with a column.
First time, first. Mr. President, might I have the floor when you have a chance? I'm not done yet, please.
And all I was going to ask is if someone would like to amend the current legislation and say, in accordance to WebEx, uh, we can have no more than 60 speakers. That way each person would have 30 seconds if that many were to sign up.
That's quick, that's very quick. What are you gonna say, hello and goodbye? Wow, that's quick.
Good, well.
That's quick. My, and here's another thing.
I'm just asking for a motion. It's up to you. I'm just driving the meeting.
Mr. President, there's another, there's another question, Mr. President. If the, um, the people in who, once again, are we gonna do, oh, by the email request? Is the, is that, is that how we're gonna do first come, first served? About how a clerk gets the emails in a date, date and time? I just want to know what process you want us?
Yes, so first come, first served. It was, it was going to be the, the actual timestamp of the email. It's, it's, uh, GPS timestamp across all computer systems.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a process of procedure that we have to tell our clerk. So that's, again, again, we can further this discussion or, you know, we can resolve it now. I'm, I'm, I'll, I'll talk all night with this, just to make sure we got.
Yeah, and this is absolutely up to the council. This is up for debate right now. I'm ready to call this for a vote. Or you, uh, any, any motion can supersede this, so, um.
Well, how many minutes have we given them?
It, it's specified right here. It's 30, up to 30 minutes. And if it's all single speakers, it's divided equally.
30 minutes?
No.
If one person comes, they can speak for 30 minutes?
No.
No, four.
Well, that's on a group.
Four minutes for a group.
Right, so what's the?
Three minutes for a person.
Where three people come in, huh? Are we giving them three minutes apiece? We giving them four minutes apiece?
Just three minutes apiece.
What doesn't say anywhere, three minutes apiece?
So if we're talking three minutes apiece, we don't only have 10 people, max.
Right, that's what you should do.
No, it, I.
You gotta put something in there, how many minutes we're gonna do.
I have to read through your rules again, cause this became much more complicated when it was re-adopted. Um.
Well, this, this is the reason we wanted to put it in committee. We weren't against public speaking.
You adopted these rules. You did adopt these rules. So if you'd like to put it in committee again.
No, 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 no. We just spent, we're, we're just spending 15 minutes here deciding how we wanna do it. And everybody has spoke up with a question. So apparently the rules weren't really all that clear until we brought this up, which was.
Can I have the floor, Mr. President?
No, actually, I'm gonna clarify something and I'm gonna tell everybody that they must address the chair. This rule that is on the screen right now was adopted by unanimous vote of this council. You all read and adopted this. There is absolutely, now, now, whether the people are in person or not in person, I am going to drive the public comment period for a total of 30 minutes as your votes required when you adopted the rules of order. And I am going to drive it as stated in public comment period in the rules you adopted. If you would like to amend your rules, you can. I believe public comment period should come back, but it has to be, of course, by way of your majority vote. And if you do bring it back, I will run it as exactly stated in the rules that you adopted. It's simple. Either bring it to a vote or not.
I think, uh, Michael, you, you hit it. This, you, you'll drive, drive the public comment and, uh, we'll just move on with it.
All right, so if there's no motion to commit, we either need a motion to commit or we're gonna move this to a vote right now.
I make a motion.
I'd like to bring this to a vote, please.
I like, I like to make a motion like we just got to discussing with Michael driving and we'll just, we'll vote on it today.
How many minutes are we gonna give each speaker?
It's three minutes.
Or is it seven?
In our rules that we voted on a year ago, that we struggled over and spent a great deal of time at, only one year ago, the rules that are now before you on the screen that Michael has put up in front of you, the rules that we all decided a year ago.
Tell me what paragraph that three minutes is in.
It, Michael just pointed that out to you.
I don't see it. I see four, four minutes.
I don't see it.
Four minutes when they approved.
Well, show me three, Celeste. I'm looking.
All right, first off.
Michael, can you show?
Right, right here, the way you guys redid the, uh, public comment period, it doesn't specify.
That's what I'm trying to say.
If one person is there.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Well, right. And, and for the record, you're raising issues with the rules that were adopted, not the resolution to bring public comment back.
Well, you gotta bring it back. You gotta make sure you got the rules the way you want it because we're bringing it back under special considerations.
For the record, I didn't want to change public comment period rules in the first place. You all voted by way of majority vote to change it.
I'm not hearing a few mic about it. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, all right, okay.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
So, um, uh, the minority leader suggested that we can make a motion, um, to just unilaterally support public comment period and just let you drive it.
And if you were to do that, I would divide the time equally and cap it at 30 speakers so that they would each have one minute at least.
But we still have to ent, entertain the motion on the floor, right?
Of course.
First.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. President, may I have, may I ask you a question, Mr. President? I, I don't believe, I don't believe the problem is 30 speakers. I believe the problem would be if you had two or three speakers.
Look, we're rehashing a discussion that happened a year and a half ago. I thought that the, the public comment period rules were just fine back then because we divided it equally. And if we only had 10 people or one person, they got capped at three minutes. But it got changed to what is on the screen right now by way of majority vote. So.
I, I would like to motion, I like that early motion, I'd like driving.
Yep, I'll second that.
I agree. Mr. President, would you like to take on the responsibility?
Yes, can you amend the motion to bring public comment period back, um, for a maximum of 30 minutes? And depending on how many speakers are signed up, uh, the time will be divided equally amongst a maximum of 30 speakers. And each individual speaker should be capped at three minutes.
Beautiful.
Well, 30 times 30, it would have three, that's 90 minutes, isn't it?
No, 30 times one.
Well, you said, what, you said, you said three minutes?
Capped at a max of 30 minutes.
Each speaker would have a maximum of three minutes. And if more speakers are signed up, the time would be divided equally up to a maximum of 30 people and 30 minutes elapsed.
Okay, so you're saying each speaker could speak for three minutes?
Yep.
Okay, you're gonna, so we have to put that in there as an amendment?
Uh, or you could just verbally make the motion that you'd like to bring it back like that.
So we can add it to Celeste's legislation if you would like. You can add it to Celeste's legislation.
All right, make a amendment.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman.
That's what I'm driving.
All right, no, if you'd like to do it that way, that's, that's even better. So, um, there's a motion to amend the resolution to restore public comment during the COVID-19 pandemic. The, the amendment suggested was whereas the council president will direct public comment period for a total of 30 minutes. And whereas there will be a maximum number of speakers of 30.
I think that's too many words. Can't we just say, be a resolved that for the duration of the suspension of the council rules in accordance, public comment in accordance with the maximum of three minutes, like just put it there in accordance with all.
Go for it, make the motion. I'm just trying to summarize what you guys are saying. So make a motion, Councilman Moody.
I'll make a motion that the, that the be a resolved reads, be a resolved that for the duration of the suspension of Utica Common Council regular rules of order, public comment at council meetings shall be deducted by way of, uh, WebEx in accordance with all stipulations of the common council regular rules of order with a three-minute cap per speaker. Period. Members of the public may email the city clerk at city clerk, um, at cityofutica.com no later than 3:00 PM on the day of council meetings to arrange to be placed on the list to call in via WebEx to make, uh, comments to the common council.
Very good, Councilman Moody. I second that. Very good.
All right, we got a second to in the amendment. All right. And this is being recorded if the clerk needs that, uh, played back. Uh, all right, your votes on the amendment. McNeil.
Yes.
Burmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes, yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yes.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Lamedico.
I better vote yes after all this. Yes.
All right, Debrango.
Yes.
All right, the motion, yeah, the, yes, thank you. The amendment has passed. And now the votes on the legislation. McNeil.
Yes.
Burmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yes.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Lamedico.
Yay.
Debrango.
Yes.
Ninety's adopted.
Thank you. You guys did some good work there on the floor.
Thank you, everyone. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. President Protemp and Fourth District Councilwoman, Frank Miola, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, um, I like to, uh, be privileged to move, uh, Proposition Resolution Number 11. Um, Commissioner Deeds for our, my colleague, Delvin Moody. Be it resolved that the common council does hereby appoint the following person as a Commissioner Deeds in the City of Utica for two years commencing January 6th, 2021 and ending December 31st, 2022. Councilman Del, Delvin Moody, 119 Game Street, Utica, New York, 13501.
Is there a second?
Burmaster.
Burmaster's the second. McNeil, your vote.
Yes.
Burmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yes.
Beatrice. Beatrice. I'll come back to Beatrice. Williamson.
Yes.
Lamedico.
Yay.
Debrango.
Yes.
Beatrice, I need your vote on this.
Yes, I'm sorry. I had to mute off.
Thank you. Yeah, no problem.
Ninety's adopted.
All right. Councilman, you have the floor again.
Thank you, Mr. President. If the council would be allowing me to, uh, move Resolution Number One, that's another Commissioner Deeds. Be it resolved that the common council does hereby appoint the following person as Commissioner of Deeds in the City of Utica for two years commencing January 6th, 2021 and ending December 31st, 2022. Natalie, Nadine Baccaloni, 1128 Wetmore Street, Utica, New York, 13501.
Burmaster votes.
Thank you, Burmaster, for the second. McNeil.
Yes.
Burmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yes.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Lamedico.
Yay.
Debrango.
Yes.
Ninety's adopted.
Thank you. Council, uh, Councilman, you have the floor.
Mr. President, I'd like to thank you for the, um, extra moment of silence for, um, our, uh, Mr., um, Mitch Ford and the mayor's wife. Um, once again, members of the common council and families out there, please, uh, pray for these individuals that they come back with their health and, uh, spread the joy that they always did in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that all this evening?
Yes, sir, that's all.
Thank you. Fifth District, Councilman Moody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a few things. Um, I first want to begin by, um, thanking all of our first responders, um, as the Utica Fire Department has mentioned, they are out there doing a heck of a job. I was just, um, walking home, um, walking through the district today and seen the work they're doing at O'Nata Square. I think it was a, a crash, um, pretty bad accident. And they're out there. Also, our police department, as the chief has mentioned, um, tremendous uptick in, uh, 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 gun shootings and gun violence. And, um, there's been a lot that's been happening in terms of, um, talks and conversations. I'm actually going to be doing a conversation tomorrow at 6:00 PM on Facebook Live to talk about the efforts of, of, um, uh, what we can do to curtail and reduce gun violence. Um, what's different about this, and, and it is to echo what the chief has said, is that it cannot be a conversation that's pointed at the administration or the municipality or the police alone. But we have to have a different type of conversation that really looks toward the community. And, um, begins to not point a finger at the community, but say we need a community effort in order to transform this conversation about how do we reduce gun violence? We have to take down and tear down this mentality against snitching. We have to take down this mentality of not coming forward to bring forth information to the police department. And, um, we have to take down this mentality that is only on the police to, uh, to, uh, limit the, uh, amount of shootings that we're having at the city. So I wanna thank the police and the work that they're doing. And, uh, I agree, I do agree. Having talked to a lot of, um, a lot of people in the community and families, um, that we have to look at, um, uh, some of the discovery laws. And while I am a staunch supporter of, uh, of, uh, um, of the bail reform, um, it, it does have the illusion in the community from the conversations that I've been having. They, they feel, um, that they can do whatever and have any type of, uh, action in the community with no repercussion. The response to that is not a repeal of bail reform, um, but it is to have a community effort to make sure that we can curtail that mentality. Um, that being said, I just wanna give this update and then I'll be done, Mr. President. Um, I did, was able to meet with, um, Councilman Jack Lamedico at large. He can probably talk about it more. And so, um, one of the responses that we have to this uptick in gun violence is about this, uh, camera surveillance ordinance. Um, was able to meet with him. Um, he had some ideas and we were able to talk through those. So hopefully we can get some amendments on that. Um, bring it to the judge, corporation, council, the mayor, and get some support to pass that ordinate, uh, that, um, ordinance to make sure that, uh, multiple dwelling units in the City of Utica have a requirement to have video footage. So we can maybe provide, uh, that evidence to the police and start to solving, um, or really giving them the evidence and information that they need to start closing some of these homicides in the city. Um, glad to have public comment period back. I think it's the right thing to do now. Um, while we're certainly not out of the woods, we're certainly out of the water maybe potentially with COVID-19. And glad to invite the public back to bring their comments before the council. That's all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Sixth District, Councilman Joe Beatrice, you have the floor.
Yes, hi, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first thing I wanna say, uh, I don't, I wanna reiterate everything that Chief Williams has, uh, said tonight. Um, they did a great job, and I believe it was in my area earlier in the week, just pulling, uh, a local traffic stop. And as they were, uh, having the people exit, they were able to confiscate a handgun. Um, and so I think they're doing a great job. The fire department's doing a great job. But there's one of our departments that we don't really give a lot of credit to. And they're very shorthanded, especially with the virus too, is our DPW guys. Um, now, we had a storm a couple of weeks ago. I thought they did a great job. They're out there all the time. And, you know, these guys, uh, that, they're in a no-win situation all the time. Uh, you know, people, especially with social media, they love to jump on and say how bad the roads are. These guys are out there. These guys are out there sometimes 10, 11 hours at a time, working all night long. And it's, it's a, it's a thankless job for them. So I just wanted to give them a shout out and, uh, appreciate everything they do. And, uh, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Minority Leader and Council at Large, Mark Williamson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, gee, everybody said everything tonight. I'll pass the same word. Strong work to the police, the fire, the DPW, the parks. You know, getting everything plowed in the parks and everything else. And, uh, no, great job. I, also with the administration and the city's still moving forward with everything going on in this world. And, uh, so Bravo Zulu theme as well. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council at Large, Jack Lamedico, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I apologize for interrupting you today.
Oh, no, that's all right. It was, uh, most of it was good.
It felt good. Um, I just, uh, uh, well, a lot of everything's been said already. When you're the second from last person to talk, it seems like, uh, you, you're just reiterating. But, uh, once again, you know, uh, the workers of the city, you know, law enforcement, fire, DPW and, and codes and everybody does a great job, especially during this time of COVID. Uh, you know, I appreciate them. I, I, and I know the people out, uh, our residents appreciate them as well. Uh, you know, Delvin and, and the police chief, you know, they're talking about the, uh, these weapons on the street. And, uh, you know, it's really getting bad. And it's these young kids. They just don't understand the rules of the street, you know. of the street. You know, they just think they can make their own rules now and how things are. And that's just not how it is. One of the things I was talking to Delvin about was, you know, we have to, we have to get the community a little more involved. You know, the police can't, they, you know, they can get some guns off the street, but the majority of the guns you're going to get off the street and or at least quell them firing them are going to be the people on the street talking with these young kids. Tell them that there's other ways to go in this world, you know, and helping if there's a beef with somebody, working it out. You know, the police can't do that. You know, the police there to conduct law enforcement, you know, they have some civil affairs duties as well. But the truth in it is the people on the street are going to quell this. And we need to get a force together with the citizens on the street, work with them, to work with our youth, to get them to turn away from the guns, to look more for their future. You know, right now when they're shooting at these kids at each other, they think they have no future. And we really have to figure a way how the adult citizens in these communities, with the assistance of the city and of the police, and the monies and the resources that we can give to the people on the streets to help these kids out so we could we could quell all these gunshots. Because it's never going to stop until we do something like that. And because, you know, I spent, you know, almost 30 years in parole, you know, we're not going to stop it. It's the people that they look up to, that they'll listen to, that is going to take care of these issues. So we need to help those people out, to help the young people out. So that's what I have to say on that. And I'll be working with Delvin and the rest of the council people if they'd like to work with us on on issues of that sort. So thank you there. And once again, I wish everybody a happy new year and hopefully we get this COVID behind. Just thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council at Large, Frank DeBranco, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one, one thing I want to talk about is the fire department. Obviously, you have a 20-year veteran in the fire department. I know when Councilman Beatrice brought this up to me and ran it by me with, you know, me being on the Public Safety Committee, you know, I jumped on it right away. And, you know, these members of the fire department that, you know, fourth platoon, truck one, you know, they're going to get their days. They're going to get their Medal of Honor, I'm sure. Right now with the COVID, you can't have these ceremonies right now, but I'm sure it'll be coming, hopefully, maybe this summer, that they will get recognized. But I just want to reiterate, it takes a whole team effort. I know that a couple of gentlemen, you know, you got to have the guts to go in there and do what you got to do. But it takes a team effort, takes the whole platoon, starting from the online deputy chief all the way down to work in coordination to, you know, pull off some of these rescues that they do pull off. So that was a great feat. They'll be proud and it'll be with them for the rest of their lives. And I am very, very grateful for the UFD, what they've done for me and my family, and what they're doing for the citizens of this area. As Scott, Chief Ingersoll mentioned, you know, we had over 14,500 calls, something like that this year. I mean, that's outrageous, you know? And we only have, you know, 23 men a day, 24 men a day, whatever. And, you know, that's a lot on the members. And they're doing a great job, and I just, I just can't thank them enough. As far as Chief Williams and his department, he's got it running pretty smooth. You know, you're going to have, you know, going to have a little bumps in the road, but he's, he's working with the public, he's working with the Citizen Reform Committee, and he is, is probably one of the best chiefs that this department ever had in the history of the department. I think he's got a good relationship with his, with the men and women. I think he's got a good relationship with the community, and that's what we need, somebody strong of that nature. So I just want to commend both departments. As far as Dave Short, you know, he was on tonight. Yes, he's doing, you know, I understand, you know, he's in a tough position. A lot of people, I see some of the complaints on Facebook, you know, well, your streets aren't good, your streets aren't good. Well, you know, there's, like you said, it takes, I don't know, maybe six hours or something to, to really get the city, all the streets plowed, I think, one route completely plowed. So sometimes you do have snowfall that does come two, three, four in the morning, and it builds up by six in the morning. So, you know, you can't get it all, but I think they did a tremendous job this last storm. I didn't hear too many complaints. So that is all. I just wanted to mention a few, a few departments that we do have in the city that are working very well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. I've got just a few quick things this evening before everyone's so quick to call for that motion to adjourn. The first thing, I'd like to second everything that everyone said this evening during the remarks, which is a lot of great compliments and useful critique and commendations of the city, whether it's public safety, both fire and police, and the DPW. And Councilman Williamson, you brought up the administration. It has been a tough time during COVID-19, during this pandemic, to just think on our feet, keep the city moving. Not only has the actual virus, the disease, been afflicting people within the city and, you know, taking, you know, portions of departments out, and we have to keep things running, but we've had to keep up with, you know, quickly changing executive orders over and over and over again. And while, as Councilman DeBranco said, there are some critiques and people do complain about the services, I really think, and a lot of constituents have put this forward, that in a lot of ways throughout this pandemic, the city has done a very good job of keeping things moving forward as best as we can. So thank you for that. You know, the, the next and last thing I want to state, I was going to state something from, from my own personal, you know, commentary about this. But just before the meeting, I did receive a communication and a press release also from the City of Utica Republican Committee regarding the events that happened today in our Capitol. And I do want to read a statement. This statement is not partisan. This statement, I believe, many of us and may get behind, but this is something I really feel that needs to be read this evening regarding what happened. The City of Utica Republican Committee condemns the unlawful actions which unfolded in our nation's Capitol today. As a nation, we must consistently balance the freedom of speech, dissent, and conscience with process, order, and justice. There is no justification for the escalation of a protest into riot and violence, and the Utica GOP will not stand for the affront to our principles and freedoms. We condemn the actions of those involved in today's events. Personally, I wanted to read that from the committee, not so that it came off as partisan, but because today that is the focus of the press, that is the focus of what's going on. And as many of the things that have just erupted over the last 12 months in this country, the City of Utica has done things differently. We've had peaceful protests. We do know how to voice our opinion. We have a public safety bureau, both in fire and police, who has de-escalated things over this last 12 months. And, and I just want to highlight that, you know, in the City of Utica, we hold things to a higher standard, and the events that unfolded today are just unfortunate. And, you know, yes, crazier things have happened in history. If you go back and, and read, you know, over the last couple hundred years, but to see something like this happen in our lifetimes today, and many of the things that have happened over the past 12 months, it's disheartening. And I know the grave majority of this country do not want to support actions like this now or in the future. And I hope we can just continue to be the great nation we are in the future and move forward from this. So thank you. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to address Councilman Moody because he has a matter in committee, and he's going to be discussing it tomorrow, I believe he said.
Yes.
I want him to know that the video camera ordinance, as presently presented in committee, cannot be adopted in that form, number one. Number two, as long as he's going to be talking to people about it, I think you should talk to them about what they think about the idea and also if something like this really needs an impact study because he gives us the division. There is a definition of multiple dwellings that he puts in there that's a state statute. But how many cameras, where they are, there usually is a recording devices and all of that. If anybody is familiar with all that, knows it's a tremendous cost, and you would have to justify that in a legal sense as to whether you can justify such an ordinance that calls for a private person to put items on their property, pay for it, and what's the justification of it?
Judge, Judge, can I say something on that when you get done?
That all has to be considered. And I want to know that, I want to, Councilman Moody, if he's going to be talking to people, to bring up that subject so that when he calls me, and I wish he would, because I didn't draw what he has in there, we can discuss how the matter is in committee will have to be dismissed because it doesn't meet the standard. But how, what he finds out in the community about how we could go about this, and we have to also find out what it, what the cost and impact would be on a personal owns building, and how many cameras, where they are, all of that. It's very complicated. So I wanted him to know that. And I only say it now because I know he's going to be talking about it tomorrow, and he could talk to people and see, get some feedback. And then he and I will talk, and I would be glad to assist him in that regard. Thank you.
Judge, can I say something? This is Councilman LaMedico.
You, you may have the floor, Jack LaMedico.
Can you, can you hear me? Judge, can you hear me?
Yes.
It's Councilman LaMedico. All the, all this, all this, what we're working on, myself and Delvin, it's all going to be vetted by yourself. Codes, which I'm already talking to codes, and they think it's a good idea. So it's going to be vetted through the district attorney's office. It's also going to be vetted through our corporation council. Anything that we present to, to this council itself will be thoroughly vetted by yourself and the people I spoke with. So it will be put together, you know, we're, we're, we're still trying to come up with the, with the correct verbiage and a way to, to make it a good deal for the, for the land, for the landowners, excuse me, the landlords. And this is going to be for multi-dwellings, you know, three and above. And we, so there's a lot of things we need to look at, and I understand what you're saying. But don't torpedo it until we get it to you, please.
I don't think that the judge was trying to torpedo it. And thank you for the information, Councilman.
I got your mic.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm talking ahead.
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely.
I will, I will do what Councilman Moody requests me to do, and that is my, my position on this body, that I am to assist you with legislation you could adopt and that would pass judicial review.
Right.
So if there are multiple people involved, I just want Councilman Moody to know that I am stand ready to know what he learns and who we should contact for input and how we should proceed in this matter. And so we have, if you want to have this kind of legislation, we'll do it in a proper manner.
I appreciate that, Judge. And we will, we'll discuss it with you when we put an actual document.
I'm just saying, you're supposed to have an impact on it. You have to have that because you, because you have to justify that on judicial review.
Listen, we know how smart you are. We're certainly not going to do anything without you looking at it.
All right, all right. So, all right, is there anything else this evening? Thank you for the.
I make a motion to depart the pattern.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we're adjourning. Is anyone opposed to adjournment? Everyone have a great evening. Thank you for the meeting.